Tracy Wiz will lead us in prayer.
Sure. Sit down with me, please. Lord, we come before you with a full agenda today and we're so excited about all the opportunities that are being provided to our students, Lord, and we pray a special blessing upon each child in school today and every adult that serves those children, Lord, and we just thank you for the chance to lead. We take this opportunity today, Lord, to put some important things before you. We just ask that you would bless the work of our hands today, Lord, and take each one of us home safely after today, in Christ's name.
Amen. It would be remiss of me not to start our meeting today without welcoming Dr. Allen Long and Kelly Mooney to the back. And then we also want to just take a moment to celebrate and recognize the incredible achievements we've made in Alabama. Our students are leading the charge, showing remarkable progress in both fourth grade math and reading. We made significant strides from forty ninth to thirty fourth in reading, fifty second to thirty second in math. Alabama ranks first among states in math recovery and third in reading between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four. This success is a testament to the hard work and dedication of Dr. Mackey, the Alabama State Department of Education staff, the implementation success of both Alabama Numeracy and Literacy Acts, our local LEAs, administrators, teachers, students, and parents. We just want to thank you all for your unwavering commitment to the students in Alabama. The evidence is so clear that we are focusing on every child, every day, every chance. Let's give them a round of applause. We want to thank everybody for waiting on us this morning, this afternoon, but we will move forward with the agenda we have with us, the University of Alabama, Birmingham. You all can come up.
Should we show our gifts first?
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you again for the opportunity to come before you. Definitely would like to say welcome to the new board members. Glad to have you with us and look forward to working with you. This represents our nineteenth institution that we have been to visit. We have, we decided after we ended our previous process for program approval to go on the road and visit the institutions so that we can learn more about each one. Definitely has been the highlight of everything that we do. We find it a pleasure to go visit all of our institutions. And so UAB was just the same, definitely not a disappointment. They welcomed us, they had opportunities for us to speak with the faculty, speak with the staff, talk to their assessment team, talk to their certification and field experience team, and we were able to authentically learn more about where they are, what are their successes, what are their challenges, what's their vision, where are they moving forward. So without further ado, I have Dr. Lesley, she here, and she's going to explain a little bit more about where UAB currently is.
Thank you all for allowing me to be here today. I am the Assistant Dean for Accreditation and Assessment, so I have just a one pager here to provide some pointers about the opportunities that we are having for initiatives right now at UAB. And the information begins with our enrollment data for this current year. So you'll see that overall we have four hundred and forty-seven candidates enrolled in our initial certification programs. So that's a combination of our Class B and our Alternative A programs. Our largest program is elementary education with a hundred and sixty-nine candidates enrolled in it.
That's good.
It is good. Our advanced certification programs have one hundred and twenty-two in our master's programs and ninety-seven in our EBS programs. Special education is our largest master's program and our largest EBS is the T-SOFT program. Psychology, educational psychology, you all may remember, was recently approved as a program and it is, it has enrolled its second cohort. They can enroll twelve at a time based on their accreditation rules and faculty maximums, and they have twenty-three enrolled as student attrition. So there are more people who want to be in that program than are possible to enroll at this point in time. So we are adding a faculty member next year, so hopefully that will help that faculty member who is very busy and excellent at what she does. In our enrollment initiatives, we want to clean out just some highlights. One of those is that we have a cohort now of special education. We are working to build master's teachers. This is with Hoover City Schools. They approached us about this possibility of them splitting the cost with us and with the candidate. So these are teachers who are, have taught in Hoover City Schools for at least three years and they are creating a grow your own by sponsoring this program. The program runs just like our traditional masters program. However, there are some courses that meet specifically with Hoover standards. So the IEP course, for example, is tailored to how do we perform IEPs in Hoover City. So we welcome other school districts to participate in this sort of type of cohort with us as well. And I have authorization from the dean to say that. In our production of teachers, in the last three years, based on our Title II reports, we're averaging a hundred and twenty-eight new teachers going into the field in our initial programs. UAB teach, we know there are lots of UAB, our teach models throughout the state now for STEM, and these are candidates who are majoring in a science or math field and then they, they are convinced that they should also get a degree in education so, or a STEM minor in education so that they could be certified. And we have had one hundred candidates go through that program. So they might be in cancer biology or biomedical engineering, and then they've added on this certificate to be able to be a teacher as well. And we have a new initiative at UAB called the Blazer Core. So our core curriculum has been revamped. It's definitely part of our SAC COC, National Accreditation or Regional Accreditation. And in the Blazer Core, we are allowed to offer courses to all students at UAB. So one that I would like to highlight is Disabilities in Society. That's a new course that has been offered, is taught by our special education faculty, and it is not on a checklist. So this is a course that any freshman can come in and take, sophomore could take. So we are very excited about this opportunity to have some of those candidate students who may have not thought about education before, take some coursework with us that might woo them. We have a new one about graphic novels, so we're teaching literacy and then also inviting in some, some maybe non-traditional students to consider education. I won't take as long on the next bullet points. Thank you. The Literacy and Numeracy Act, of course, we are paying very close attention and we appreciate all of the State Department's guidance that they give to us and the leader's guidance. We were recently at the Reading Symposium in North Alabama. If the State Department is going to host, we're going to be there and listen. We have revised curriculum. We are excited about the opportunity to take some math classes back to the School of Education and Human Sciences and to have faculty who have taught elementary math teach those classes. So there will be, of course, the content that's necessary, the pedagogy and those field experiences also. You all, I think I can commend UAB even before I worked there for being a strong producer of elementary mathematics teachers. So this is, this is in our real house and we're happy about bringing those courses back to us. We have had some growing pains with learning how to structure some of the newer assessments, such as the Foundations of Reading, and the state review really helped us pinpoint, we need to look at this and really get a plan, and we have one now. So we were having some candidates take that class, that assessment rogue, and we are now helping them determine, you take that at this moment in time, after you finish those three courses, those nine hours of the Science of Reading. We've had some improvements in field experience as well, where our faculty are going with our candidates, really helping them, supporting them in the field, and then making those connections back to the classroom as well, and really being intentional about the Science of Reading especially. We couldn't do our job without you all. I want to thank the ARI, the Office of School Improvement, just provided presentations for our student teachers about classroom management for just last month. We are able to give AMSTID science and math training to our teacher candidates before they leave us. You all probably love Kim Mitchell, we do. She has spoken to our interns at both our orientations this academic year and just done an amazing job of just talking with them about professionalism and what's expected, but the students respond to her so well. We are so proud that she's leading the mentoring program and hope that all of our candidates who've become complete or tend to know her. We definitely have folks who are really intentional about helping our students. We have a dedicated faculty member for EDTPA, but she has a second theory role where she is observing candidates, about thirty per year, who have completed the program. And she's also, I hope this is okay to say, kind of mother hen. How are things going? Tell me the truth, I will support you. And is willing to text with them late at night when I am ready to go to sleep. And does a really fantastic job in that role. Because she's helped them with EDTPA, then they trust her for that next year. It's really beautiful. And then we have professional organizations, the Student AEA, we have Honor Society, both of those are trying our best to get some mentoring happening between those upper classmen and the younger ones too. They're very busy though, you all may know that, the candidates today, many of them work outside of going to school. In the visit, we had some strengths identified. We so appreciate Dr. Hampton and Dr. Walker for coming out and spending time with us. I have told my colleagues at other institutions that it was really a highlight for our year. It's caused us to have lots of follow-up conversations that have been really beneficial to the whole team. We have a new dean, this is her second year, she's doing great things with us. We just have grown in camaraderie, which you all saw when you were on campus, everybody pulling together to share all the things that they're so excited about. Our faculty have experience in the classroom, so they're, they're not just sages on stages, they're trying to emulate or help, help our children to emulate what they've done in their classrooms. Over the next year, we're going to hire ten new faculty or staff. A few of those are due to retirement, but some of those are due to just growth, and so very excited about that. Student engagement was reported as higher. Students loved the opportunity to chat with the State Department, which, which reminded us that we probably need to give them more opportunities for that type of audience with the dean or others. We were commended, thank you, Dr. Walker, for our data reporting system. We just partnered that with our SAC COC annual reporting, so our programs are looking at their student learning outcomes each year, recording that, but then, you know, we get the side effect of State Department and our other creditors too. And the students said that they were ready, they felt prepared, and many of them, as you all know, and some love and some do not love, are being hired while they're student teaching. And when they come back to us, we're very proud when they say, it's going well. So that, that speaks to their tenacity too. I do have the back, I hope that's legal with the one pager. We had a few areas for improvement, and one of those was just enhancing publicity, that people wanted to tell their story more about the really good things that are happening. I will tell you, we have hired a new communication specialist. We had about eight months without one, so, you know, that was a deficit. One of our December graduates published an article with her professor about mathematics. So those are the kinds of things we want to tell and tell the world. We are, we were advised, Dr. Hampton has a photograph, gave us a photograph of our checklists. They come in a drawer and other people's come in a binder and some come in a small binder, but ours comes in a drawer. She said, you have a lot of programs and do you have enough enrollments to maintain those programs? So we were making some really hard decisions also, so we want you to know that when we bring to you a request that we have really thought it through, we've looked at the data from our institutional effectiveness program to help us determine those, make those decisions. We also had a rubric for professional dispositions that we thought we were very proud. The lowest level was emerging and we had, we had surveyed the faculty to determine what our levels would be, but Dr. Hampton said, some of these things are unacceptable. You cannot use the word emerging. We fixed it that day before she left, so just want you to know. But every meeting, we talked about that, so I want y'all to know, we looked at our rubric and said, we understand, I'm talking about those first years EDU two hundred, but we will say unacceptable when the behavior really would be unacceptable. We're not marking any of those, by the way. Everybody's had it too, okay? And then we also were, were recommended to look at our curriculum sequencing, make sure we're, we're helping the candidates really understand when to take the exam and then perhaps offering the practices earlier. So based on all that feedback, we've made some changes already. One of those is we are discontinuing, we've asked to discontinue five of our programs. This year, those five programs have an average of two point six students in each of them.
Say it again.
So in those five programs, if you take the five that we're asking to discontinue, on average, we have two point six students per program. So it's just too small to maintain, and so that's one of the, one of the hard decisions that we're making. We are going to pilot the practices for our elementary majors in a course called EDU one hundred. It's an introduction to college course and we have a section just devoted to those who are going to be teachers. And so the dean is going to provide vouchers for students to complete two forty tutoring and take the practices in their freshman fall year and test, is this, is this the best time? I was studying for a social studies test last night with my tenth grader and we were learning about the progressive era. She's going to be more prepared to take that exam as soon as possible than maybe six years from now, you know, two years instead of six years. So I think we're going to see how it goes and we'll try to bring you some data back to let you see, you know, if it was, if it's effective. We are putting some more structured advising supports in place. Next week, we will have a February fair for physical education. The following week, we're going to have one of those for elementary and early childhood programs. So we're trying to get the whole team together, you know. I came from a very small institution before going to UAB. It was very easy to have everyone meet during lunch. That's not the way it works here. So we're trying to do a little more of that work of getting freshmen through seniors together in the same room to get the same information and make sure that they have a little more of support. But thank you again, State Department, for pointing out, we need to do that and we're, we're following up. We are, are following through with those guidelines. And my last point here is the curriculum assessment that we're monitoring, we're developing that. We, because of low enrollments, we are working on some common assessments for a common core of master's coursework. You're going to become a master's teacher, these are things that you need to know so we could have enough data to really analyze and find out if it's working, what we're teaching. So this is, this is the work we're, we're about right now, that quality assurance system we're really working on. I would be remiss to not thank Tashar Walker, our Certification Officer, who guides us in all things related to making sure those candidates leave us certified. So we just thank her for reaching out to all of you and, and keeping us in, in check with all the guidelines to make sure we're following through. And our dean, Dr. Doty, she's been tremendous support to us all and helped us, I think, have a really good trajectory that we're on. I thank you all for letting me come and talk to you and the State Department for spending time with us and reviewing all of our materials.
Thank you so much. You know, I'm just sitting here.
I know. You remember.
Always a previous dean, this is like a dream come true. I can remember us talking about the possibilities, but to actually see it, this is awesome. Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, you did it beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hampton, she supported me.
I just have a question, just a maybe question. What age do you put the, your students into the classroom for them to really see what a classroom looks like?
So right now, their very first filled experience is in the course EDU two hundred, Foundations of Education, Education as a Profession. And they can take that, they typically take that during their sophomore year, but they can take it as early as their freshman year. So we had some folks who were coming right in and taking that class. The faculty would prefer for them to take it their sophomore year.
And what does that look like? What does that?
Oh, I can tell you because I teach it during the summer and I love that class. So we just introduce them to everything about schools that we possibly can. They will watch a board meeting, for example, just to learn about the structure of what are the guidelines that they follow. They look at curriculum, they shadow a teacher and they're allowed to possibly support that teacher, maybe even if she's willing, he is willing, co-teach that lesson, but there's no responsibility.
How long is that shadowing? How long is that?
At least ten hours.
Ten hours.
And in the summer, we work with a summer program, and so it's, it's absolutely fantastic to just clean up situations.
So the longest time they would have in a classroom would be ten hours?
If they're, if they're only enrolled in that course, the next course is Foundations of Education, that's all going to be ten hour. The next course is, if you're in elementary, for instance, would be Introduction to P-six Education, and that one's a fifteen hour. So they're incremental until they get to their Methods block. Now Methods, we have two, two semesters of Methods blocks before internship. And then Methods one, they go weekly and then two full weeks at the end. And then Methods two, they do the same thing, and they sound like they should be in order. But whenever you come in, you might be in the block that's happening in, just depends on the grade levels. So lots of experiences, well over three hundred hours before the student teaches.
You just hear about so many people that go, oh, I thought education, then I get to classroom and it's not what I want to do. So you just hate for somebody to be in that, you know, think great things and then, you know, put all that time into it. So I just kind of want to feel whatever.
Well, and I'll, I'll add to that in that Foundations of Education course, we make sure they go to a Title II school also. So we really are doing our best and we try to tell our candidates, you know, sometimes we make you drive thirty minutes to that placement, and the reason is the rules. We always go by the rules. Depth and breadth. We want you to be certified to teach, fill in the blanks, sixth through twelfth, you need to see a variety of grade levels, you need to see a variety of schools. And, you know, the Title II report would promise every year that they're prepared to teach in Alabama schools, so.
And just if I could add, the one thing that we've made a shift with is that we are sure that all of our institutions have that progression of field experiences and also they have them across a variety of settings so that their candidates are exposed to different teaching environments, different types of students, different poverty levels, income levels, excuse me, and also so that they are prepared for any position that they will have. So, so our, our institutions have really been intentional about designing their programs so that they begin with them very early to see what it's like actually in a school so that if someone says, ah, I don't think I'm cut out for this, they get to see that early rather than going through their entire career and not understanding that.
That's right. And on the certification application, we list not only where they are for student teaching, but for these programs that have the various ages, we're also listing prior experiences to indicate that, that they did have that kindergarten placement also. So the accountability does help us make sure we're meeting all those goals.
No, I just wanted to applaud you on with that Foundations of Reading test that you put in place.
Yes.
The fact that you're making sure the candidates complete the coursework before taking the assessment, that makes a big difference.
We're, we're very hopeful that you're going to see that in our next, next report part.
Appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. And really, the State Department's pointing out some things really did help us.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So next, thank you to you guys. Follow a UAB blazer, I'm glad to have my mug, I'll try to not get it started. The, so next we have American Board with us and she's got a handout and we also have, this was not, we just loaded this into assembly this morning, so she's got it up here, but you will have it in your assembly if you want to go back and look at things later, so you don't necessarily have to keep your paper copy. And our presenter today, I can't remember your name, but I did want to recognize Toby Roth, because Toby's a good friend and I know he works with American Board, and some of you have talked to him, because you've told me you talked to him on the phone, but you weren't, you didn't put a face with a name, so I want to make sure we put that face with a name.
We'll bring him up since you gave him.
Okay, yeah, give him some clothes, bring him up here. Let you introduce yourself and thank you for taking time to come and join us today.
Well, thank you for having me. My name is Isabel Welch and I am the Director of Government Affairs for American Board. I'm going to see if I can get this clutter to work. We targeted it out earlier, so you should be good to go.
It's, it's touchy.
There we go, it is. So American Board for Certification of Teacher Excellence is our very long drawn-out original name, but we now go by American Board. We are an online alternative teacher preparation program and we are designed for local professionals who are looking to change careers and work in education. So we offer a flexible and affordable route to teacher certification that makes it easier for local communities to cultivate their own teachers. And our vision, as you can see here, is your community, your teachers. So we find real value in people coming out of the community and, you know, stepping up to help out in the classroom. I know that we have a lot of schools all around Alabama and around the country that are experiencing a teacher shortage. There are a lot of people in our communities that see at the grocery store, you see at church on Sunday, or you see at the gym, that really stepped up to help out. And so really, our program is designed for those people, people that are later in life and people that have a vested interest in helping their schools and their school district improve. So a little bit of history, we have been around since two thousand and one, and we were founded by the United States Department of Education. And the reason for that was they were looking for a way to encourage local professionals to bring their real-world experience into the classroom. So these are their engineers who would go and teach physics, people like that. And to date, we've now certified nearly twenty thousand teachers nationwide. We currently operate in fourteen states, and there's a nice little map there, Florida, Idaho, Indiana, Mississippi, Missouri, Montana, Nebraska, North Dakota, Ohio, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania, South Carolina, West Virginia, and Wisconsin. Probably didn't need to read all that out before you, but there you go. Program participants, so in order to enroll in an American Board's program, you have to already have a bachelor's degree. So that's required before, and you are also required to pass a background check. And so it's a federal-level background check that matches all of the requirements and certifications of the state. Don't want to mess around with background checks, so we make sure that we get them all right. And on average, candidates who are participating in our program are thirty-nine years old. And I think it's really important to point this out, that this is a program for people who are later in life and not your traditional college-age student. And generally, we find that the people who are participating in our program are career changers, so journalists who would like to teach English, somebody who has met their pension but doesn't want to retire yet, and so they'd like to enter the classroom and get back, accountants who want to teach math, people like that. We also have a lot of military veterans and their spouses. So we offer our biggest discount to our military veterans and their spouses. We have a lot who have finished their times in service and are looking for another way to get back. And so they were transitioning out of the military, back into civilian life, and a lot of them are interested and very successful in teaching. We're also a national partner of DOD Skill Bridge, which is a military transition program that helps military members transition out before their service has officially ended so that when their service is over and they return home, they're ready to start working in the workforce. We also have a lot of stay-at-home parents who are transitioning to the workforce after their children have grown up. So they get their bachelors degree, they get married, they decide to stay home and raise their children, and as their children get older, they decide that they would like to return to work. And they've realized, you know, I really like teaching Sunday school on Sunday, or I really like having all of my kids' friends over for a sleepover and parties. And, you know, they have specific experiences with their children that they feel would benefit other children in the classroom. And the last category would be substitute teachers and paraprofessionals. So there are a lot of people in schools all over the country that are not fully licensed teachers and who would like to be. And sometimes something that is holding these people back is having an affordable and flexible pathway to become fully licensed. And so we work with districts in all of the states we operate in to help provide that pathway and guide the teacher or the candidates that are already in the classroom and help them become fully certified teachers. So this is an overview of our program. So the program is self-paced and it's competency-based. So So we really believe that a program like ours should work to the benefit of our candidates and allow them to study on their own schedule. These are people who are often working full-time jobs, can maybe only study on the weekends or at night. And so we want to provide a format that allows the material to work best for them. We provide candidates with rigorous, rigorous online modules and workshops that they will move through as well as practice tests and practice exams, a course syllabus, and a set of standards that they'll be assessed on. And they work through all of this knowledge in order to prepare for their final exams. In order to complete the program, they have to take a pedagogy exam and a subject area exam in the subject area that they have chosen. Those exams are American Board's Professional Teaching Knowledge Exam and the subject area exam and the content area they choose. All of our exams are aligned to National Pedagogy and Subject Area Standards. For example, our Professional Teaching Knowledge Exam is aligned to the in task standards. And we've done several studies noting the alignment between the exams and the material cover. In addition to that, in Alabama, and this quote comes out of the administrative rules from the State Department of Education, candidates completing an alternative program, specifically American Board's program, will also have to pass the current Alabama Educator Certification Assessment Program, the Approved Praxis Subject Area and Pedagogy Assessments, and the Foundations of Reading Assessment for the appropriate teaching field and grade levels. So we wanted to make sure that the candidates who were entering the classroom in Alabama were meeting the same standards that are required of other candidates and demonstrating that they are qualified in multiple ways. And while we do offer our own exams, we also found that it led to a more straightforward path to also require the same exams that the state of Alabama does. In addition to that, American Board's candidates will be required, and all alternative teacher candidates will be required to participate in the Alabama Teacher Mentorship Program during their first one to two years in the classroom, depending on the district. So the program, as I said before, is designed to be affordable and efficient. The program costs around nineteen hundred dollars. I say that because we have a lot of financial options available that allow candidates to pay in installments. We also have coupon codes and discounts for school districts and as we mentioned previously, military personnel. On average, it takes candidates about seven to ten months to complete the program. This does depend on how much time they're spending moving through the materials and also what previous background knowledge they're bringing to the table. So we would anticipate somebody who has been a long-term substitute teacher to move through the material quicker than somebody who wasn't a accountant. All right, so this slide references our Drexel University research study. So we partnered with Drexel University and we surveyed over one hundred and fifty principals across twelve states that employed American Board trained teachers. And the purpose of this study was to evaluate how effective American Board teachers were and the retention rate of American Board teachers compared to traditionally prepared teachers. You'll see on the right that we had ninety five percent of American Board teachers perform better than or equivalent to traditionally prepared teachers across ninety five percent of assessed aspects. Additionally, ninety seven percent of teachers did retain or expected to retain their American Board trained teachers, excuse me, ninety seven percent of principals expected to retain or did retain their American Board teacher past the three-year mark. And the national average is fifty percent. So obviously. Got a little bit higher than that. Additionally, the study included several things. I pulled out these quotes just because I felt that they summed it up the best. They said that American Boards or A B C T E teachers perform equal or better to their college-prepared counterparts, which you can see in that ninety five percent data point. Additionally, A B C T E teacher retention rates are positive and strong. That's referring to the ninety seven percent retention rate. And they summed up the study with this quote, and I'm not going to read the whole quote because it is a little bit lengthy, but I wanted to provide it with you because I think that it makes some really important points. One of them being that the entire nation is experiencing a teacher shortage right now. And we at American Board acknowledge that there is no silver bullet. There is no one single solution. But we do believe that alternative programs like our own can work in tandem with traditional programs in order to fill in some of those gaps and provide additional opportunities to people who may not have the option of going through that traditional program. Additionally, they concluded that American Board trained teachers were well-prepared to meet the needs of twenty-first century learners. All right, this next section is referencing the application that we submitted to the State Department of Education. Um, and on the left side in italics is the question of the props that we were given. And then on the right is the answer that we provided. So the first one was list the states where you currently operate and the number of years in operation. And a minimum of five states was required for this application question. Uh, as you mentioned earlier, we've been in operation since two thousand and one and we operate now in fourteen states. I've also included the years of operation that we have been operating in each of those states. And you'll see that some of them we have been in for a very long time and some of them are low recent additions. I have another question here. Is your ATPO currently on probation in any of the aforementioned states or under investigation in any of the aforementioned states? The answer is no, you're not on probation or under investigation in any of the previously mentioned states where we're currently operating at now. We were also asked to upload documentation to verify that our program has successfully operated for at least ten years. So we were founded in two thousand and one. We've certainly been operating more than ten years overall. We've also been operating in specific states for more than ten years. And so on our application, we included those states, the number of years that we've been operating in those states. And also we linked the approval of American Board's program in the year that it took place as evidence of our successful application. Additionally, we were asked to verify that we had certified at least ten thousand teachers. We provided a list of our first ten thousand and one candidates to the department. Um, but as I said earlier, we have now certified nearly twenty thousand individuals nationwide. And that is all I have for you. Happy to take any questions and I am very grateful for your time today.
Just two quick questions. First of all, I think the fact that it's self-paced during the period of time, is there at any point that there's any interaction with an actual instructor or professor? Or is it just the program outlined in modules?
It depends on the specific candidate circumstance. So typically, no, candidates are moving through the modules on their own. However, we do have a, helped us that candidates can reach out to our program experts on and they can point them in the right direction if they're having difficulty finding information about a concept, things like that. We also have a remediation team that is made up of licensed and qualified teachers who assist candidates, particularly after they have taken an exam but not passed it. And they help them review their answers, point them in the right direction, uh, help them with editing, editing and editing version of practicing.
Now, is there, because I know the program is for a couple of months, but is there an internship component, you know, like student teaching? I know they're thirty nine years of age average. I know the majority should have a bachelor's degree. So do they actually get out into the classroom at any point or that's not a part of it?
So that is not a part of American Board's program. Um, as I mentioned, they will participate in the Alabama Teacher Mentorship Program during their first season.
Okay, once they get out.
Yes, yeah. Um, and referring back to that Drexel study, you know, we teach principals and administration have found that because American Board teachers do tend to be older and do tend to have significantly more professional experience, that they are more capable when they enter the classroom without having that sort of experience.
Thank you.
Do you know the breakdown of, of your Certified Teachers, early childhood versus sort of that older grades? Do you know where you found more success?
So I don't have the exact numbers, but I can tell you that our elementary education and special education programs do have the most participants. Um, you know, I think elementary education in general does tend to have a high number of program participants. But our special education program has been really beneficial in especially rural areas where there might not be a special education teacher available at all. And our program has allowed a lot of schools to help somebody who is maybe already licensed in elementary education add on the endorsement area of special education and become the only special education teacher that they had access to. So those are the two areas that we do find we have the most candidates in. But I can get you more specific information after this meeting.
I was just curious.
Did I hear you say that your candidates have to take the subject area exam as well as the, I think you said professional teaching knowledge in addition to what Alabama requires? Is that what I heard?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So it would be American Board's exams and also the exams that Alabama requires. So it would be the praxis, subject area exams, the foundations of reading and any additional requirements that they have.
Any other questions?
Are your teachers or are they involved with occult?
Occult?
Cale.
Cale.
Certified Academy Language therapist.
Language therapist, right, that's speech pathology, things like that.
Yes. I know she's scared.
I can't answer the cult question. Uh, no, we do not provide those. Can you answer them? So I will say that our special education program is designed to be cross-categorical. So it does include portions on language development and therapy and things like that, but it is not specifically designed for that type of certification alone.
Okay, thank you.
And sorry. Absolutely, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, love of the situation.
So because your, because your teacher candidates are not having that experience in the classroom that we would find in a more traditional approach, are you still working through classroom management? That is probably the number one issue we hear about, particularly the mental health of our children today when they come to school, perceiving a lot of disruption in the classroom and that sort of thing. And I, I can't imagine somebody with professional experience who's never stepped in in the classroom really being prepared. So are you working with principals? Are they getting some training? I, I, you know, that is a valid concern that I have and maybe possibly others.
Yeah, absolutely. And I understand completely where you're coming from. I was a former classroom teacher myself and I know that things have changed significantly in terms of the mental health of our students and just there have been different situations and things that have come up. And so, yes, our candidates do, they go through an entire section on classroom management in their program. They're assessed on it. Um, the questions are, you know, they're, what is the word I'm thinking for? They're, they're applicable questions. So they're situations that you would be responding to as opposed to just specific one-word answers, things like that. Um, but we do, we have section, we have, they cover sections on mental health, on parent and family engagement. Um, they cover information on classroom management, um, you know, all the way down to the best way to arrange your classroom and where your students should fit. Um, we also, we do work really closely with districts and principals specifically to make sure that our students are, you know, prepared when they're entering the classroom. Um, Montana was one of our most recent states that we've added. And I was actually at their State Board of Education a couple of weeks ago presenting on our progress there. And so we have been in the state in operational since about March of two thousand and twenty-four. And we surveyed the candidates that were currently enrolled, that were currently enrolled and teaching on a provisional license and that had completed the program. And their responses were American Board's program prepared them to enter the classroom. In fact, one hundred percent said that it prepared them well or very well. And this applied to candidates who were already teaching in the classroom and adding on an endorsement area and candidates who were not previously teaching and entering the classroom. And in a lot of the comments, they mentioned how they were grateful that we did have content, not just on subject matters, but also on pedagogy. Um, they pointed out that there were specific templates and, um, specific steps of instructions and things like that they found themselves using in their classroom. And additionally, we asked their employing principals and their administrators, are you satisfied with your American Board candidate? Have they met your expectations? And one hundred percent of them said yes. And on average, they rated their American Board teacher at a four-point five out of five.
And if I could just echo the point that Isabel just touched on, of course, there's nothing mandatory about this for each and every system, each and every superintendent and principal in the state. It is merely a tool, it is an option that they can utilize. If they have, um, Ms. West, your question, if they have other priorities or interests they'd like to see in the candidates that they bring into their school, that, you know, it is at their discretion. So this is, uh, we believe fundamentally about empowering local leaders with the, with the options to meet the challenges that they're facing with the teacher shortage in their respective district.
I know you all meet the requirements for option law. Do you have plans for paying certification or accreditation with options to live through?
Um, so we are a member of A Quap and we participate in their quality symposiums and their, you know, feedback and continuous feedback systems and things like that. However, because of the way our program is designed and because it's, you know, we're in different states and the program is customized by state, it is very difficult for us to have one overarching program be accredited. And we've also found that the way the accreditation system works in the application process just doesn't align for programs like American Boards that are completely offline.
And that's what I was looking at in reference to Kate because there are some standards that you all just would not cover because it's not a part of your program.
And so short answer would be, you know, we don't have any immediate plans to pursue Kate accreditation. Um, we are involved with A Quap, but we have not, you know, officially begun the accreditation process. It's more so that we can be involved in the continuous improvement.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Question, just not necessarily about your particular American Board preparation. Uh, but is there any, are there any studies that say, is a teacher who starts their teaching career through an alternative program like yours, are they more or less likely to stick to their profession after they get certified by whoever's doing that preparation than a teacher who goes through a traditional teaching program?
I don't have any specific studies that I can cite for you except for the study that we did in partnership with Drexel University where the national average of teacher retention was eighty percent and the American Board teacher retention was ninety seven percent. But obviously I can't speak to other programs and I don't have any other studies that I can reference. So that's all I can provide you with unfortunately.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
So we, Cameron, come on up. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna break the agenda just a little bit here for an item that's not on the public agenda. But you all remember on Friday, I mentioned in, in response to your request last month about if we could bring somebody from revenue that could talk a little bit about the CHOOSE Act and, and answering questions on that. And so we do have somebody. Um, we had already sent the agenda out when Cameron confirmed she could be here. And of course, their lives, like ours, when the legislature's in session, everything changes. Um, and I would say, even though it feels like every bill over there is an education bill, truly every bill is a tax bill. So every, every bill affects revenue somehow. Um, but she was gracious to come this afternoon and so we'll jump straight to there if you, you guys are good with that. But she was gracious to come this afternoon, and so we'll jump straight to there if you guys are good with that. And then, because I think that'll get all of our guests, so any of our guests can move on with their day, and then I will handle the rest of the items on the work session. I think they're pulling up your PowerPoint. You're all up?
Well, thank you so much for the invitation. We really are glad and happy to talk about Choose Act. We know there's a lot of questions surrounding it. What I felt was best to kind of show you and talk about Choose Act is to present it in the form of how we present it to parents and schools when we go out and talk to schools and parents directly, and also when parents and schools choose to attend one of our webinars. So I'm just gonna go through this. So what you're seeing is, in essence, what parents and students and participating schools and education service providers would see as well. So Choose Act Alabama, I'm gonna go over kind of the program overview about the annual amounts that students would be eligible for and how they're eligible, talk about the family application, how they apply, also talk about that digital wallet, because again, it's an income tax credit in the form of a digital wallet. I talked about approved expenses, talk about our education service providers, who they are and how many you all currently have, and how parents and students can get support for the program. So again, Choose Act, again, is the Creating Hope and Opportunity for Our Students Education Act of 2024. It passed the early last session. It makes refundable income tax credit in the form of an education savings account or a digital wallet. So it's a little different from a normal refund. A parent will not see it on their income tax return if they will not get a check in the mail. It comes in the form of a digital wallet. So that digital wallet can be used for various expenses, from tuition and fees at participating schools to curriculum and textbooks, tutoring, other education services specifically for that child's individual educational needs. And that's what it's centered around, those expenses have to be for the child's individual educational needs. Department of Revenue, understanding what a big lift this was, we contracted with Class Wallet, who is nationally known to help other states with education service programs. So they, they have helped us with coordination and programmatic support and also custom service support. Because you can imagine, not everybody wants to call the Department of Revenue, so.
You can laugh that loud.
I can laugh that too, it's okay. So the annual amounts, there are two types of credits, and these are individual student credits, okay? So you have a $7,000 per participating student enrolled in a participating school. So again, the qualify for the $7,000 is that they have to be enrolled in a participating school. Then you have a $2,000 credit for students that are enrolled in home education programs. And that can be co-ops, it can be individual group programs, microschools, those types of programs, again, home-based programs. And this credit is capped at $4,000 per family. The total amount of program for the first academic year, which is the 2526 academic year, is $100 million. And these funds will be distributed to families beginning in July. Now, the $7,000 and $2,000 can actually come for a mixed bag for a family, right? Because you may have a parent that has one child enrolled at a participating school, while one may also be in a homeschool program. So again, you can have one family that has a child with a $7,000 credit and then one also with a $2,000 credit, because these credits are individually for those individual students. Eligibility. So I like to say the first two years is a two-pronged approach, so two years, two prongs. So beginning with the 2526 school year, you have to be a resident of Alabama with a child in grades K-5 through 12, and your AGI could not exceed 300% of the federal poverty level. Now, a lot of people hear federal poverty level, and they automatically think, well, I'm not going to qualify. Really, 300% of the federal poverty level, for example, in the chart, a family, a household of four, the federal poverty level is $93,600, so just under $94,000. And from our data being revenue, we know that about 75% of Alabama families could otherwise qualify. So again, the household is deemed those that you would otherwise claim as dependent on your income tax return. So to determine, again, that household equivalent, you pull out your income tax return, look at the number of dependents you have. So for example, in my household, we have five, two adults and three children. So I'd go to that five threshold, look across and see if my AGI exceeds that amount. If it does not, otherwise could qualify for these income tax credits. Within the eligibility, there are priorities. And there was some confusion on these priorities, that these were just, the priorities were just what was available for the first year, and that's not correct. Priorities just put somebody in a higher award approval tier. They are not qualified, so they're not necessarily a requirement to be in the program. But the first 500 spots at the SAs are held for children with special needs. And special needs are those that qualify under IDEA or Section 504. The requirement is that you can show either an IEP, IISP, or 504 plan to show that qualifying special needs. We also have another priority level behind that, and those are participating students who are dependents of active-duty military members who would otherwise be enrolled or assigned to a priority school. And we provide a priority school listing on the application, so parents can check to see if they would have otherwise been qualified. But again, so there's two main eligibility priorities, the special needs and those military members that are assigned or enrolled at priority schools only. So again, priorities are not a requirement to receive funds, they just place them in a higher award category. So for example, if somebody happened to be the 501st special needs student, being that first one would not automatically not within the program, but would then put them down into the other batch of students. So you're never not within a program priority in itself, you're just not in the top ones. So again, priorities are not a requirement to receive these funds, they just put you in a higher award level. So the family application, the application opened up on January 2nd, and it runs through April 7th. The application is done through FACS. A lot of parents in the education community are very familiar with FACS. So FACS is the application process that we are using in conjunction with Class Wallet. And you can find the application on chooseact.alabama.gov. That's the main website where all of this information is available, even this webinar itself. So application remains open until April 7th, or until funding is met. So in other words, award notifications will be sent out to parents beginning on May 1. Once the application period closes on April 7th, we will then sort, in essence, by AGI percentage, because then that is what the award is based on. So again, the program is not first come, first served. So it runs from January 2nd to April 7th. That allows families time to start the application, upload the required documents, like for the special need documentation. But again, so for example, based on that 300% federal poverty level, in this example, a family of four with an AGI of 70 would be awarded in the program before a family of an AGI of 80. So again, it's based on that percentage of AGIs, so the ones that need the most assistance will get it before the ones, again, that may not need it as much. So again, also, within the application process, families are asked, where do they intend to send their kids during that 2526 school year? Because again, that $7,000 notation is based on where the child is enrolled at a participating school. So we verify enrollment, where those child, children are indicated to be enrolled before they can get that $7,000. So to complete the application, a family needs maybe three things, because again, it goes back to that residency status and the income. So of course, we always joke about people will have to dust off first certificates or go to the state agency who issues one, because I know I have a hard time finding mine when I need them for my children. Then they also need proof of Alabama residency and also proof of income. Within both of those qualifiers, you could use your income tax return, federal or state. But we do recognize that some families may not have to file an income tax return. For example, if grandparents that are on social security income, they can provide those types of statements. You also have families that may otherwise qualify under TANF or SNAP. They can provide those documentations if they don't, otherwise are not required to file an income tax return. For proof of residency, of course, the easiest one is that Alabama income tax return. But again, you can provide other things like your recent, your driver's license, your state ID, mortgage statements, lease agreements, utility bills as well. So again, so in the application process, they can start it, they just upload these documents. They can actually do it using your phone or your computer. It's almost, we joke, it's almost like when you don't have to go to the bank anymore to deposit a check, you can just take a picture. It's the same premise. So how does somebody apply? This is the website. We always encourage parents and schools to go to chooseact.alabama.gov. That is the main homepage. Right there in the middle, I don't know if you see the long yellow bar, it says, "Family Application Apply Now." They can simply click there and it will take them to the application process. There is also other materials there where people can sign up for webinars, which is very similar to what we're going through right now. They can also, this is also where the Parent Guide is housed, which goes through the whole process for a parent from start to finish. This is also where ESPs apply, and I'll talk about them in a little bit too, education service providers. And that application for education service providers is always open. We also have our FAQs here too, because we recognize very early on, not everybody is very familiar with Department of Revenue's website, and we did not want to discourage families from applying for this, so we did set a full functioning website outside of the Department of Revenue's website. So again, while it's still us, which you can see in the top right-hand corner, we played off of our logo to be more friendly. Because not everybody thinks Department of Revenue is friendly. We can be sunshine too. But so yes, it's a different website, chooseact.alabama.gov. So the digital wallet, this is where that refundable income tax credit comes in the form of. They will begin to be dispersed for families for use in July, and it will be able to be used for that full academic year for us. And that is, starts July 1 and runs through June 30th of 2026. So they have that full year to use the funds in that account. Now, the funds always stay in that electronic account. There's no reimbursement ever to, directly to the parent. So again, too, if there is any funds left at the end of the year, that is rolled back to the Choose Act fund itself, overall fund. It does not roll over for the parent for use next year. Now, these income tax credits are on an annual basis, so once a child is in the program, they are then given preference for the next subsequent year to remain in the program. So they would, they will be required to renew, and just donate to us that they are interested to stay within the program, and then we would then re-verify that enrollment for the subsequent years. So a lot of parents ask, you know, "How do I use that digital wallet? You know, can I walk into the store, you know, almost use it like tap?" No, you cannot, okay? That digital wallet can only be used on our closed platform, that's going to be managed through Class Wallet. And within that platform, there's two ways to pay and purchase products and services. You can pay through what we call direct pay, which is, in essence, coordinating your payment directly to participating schools or tutors or therapists, again, all of which are approved within the program. Or you can use our e-marketplace. An e-marketplace would be where you can mainly see those educational materials such as textbooks, pens, paper, again, on an individual need, so you won't see bulk purchases. But it's locked down to where it's within the parameters of the program itself. So you can't, so in essence, curated, you know, so it's, it's, so you can stay within the program fund, so there's no way that somebody can go into that e-marketplace and purchase a $5,000 computer. It's not going to happen, it's not going to be available for you to even see. So again, there's two ways to use that wallet. The payment does not go into the parent's pocketbook or into their own wallet, so there's no reimbursement for parents. They have to coordinate through this portal for those transactions. So what are approved expenses? So for example, first one, tuition and fees at participating schools. Here is a list of certain fees and those that are approved and that are not approved. And all approved expenses are available in the Parent Guide at that chooseact.alabama.gov that anybody can download. You also have textbooks and approved subjects, fees for after-school and summer education programs. So everything is education-based, curriculum, private tutoring. Again, private tutoring can be anything from grades and subjects, but also along the realms of tutoring for like ACT tutoring or AP tutoring, those types of things as well. Tutors have to have certain aspects to be qualified for the program, they have to have degrees in those subjects. They also have to pass the background checks. We have actually a lot of teachers that can just provide us with their ALSID, because they'll have a great website that provides us that information and that background information as well. So you can also use it for computer and technological aids, there are certain restrictions on that. But also educational services and therapies for students, like physical therapy, occupational therapy, dyslexia, dysgraphia, and even contracted services provided by public school districts. So again, the full list of those expenses is in that Parent Guide. But again, it's about the parent's choice. So you may see where a parent goes, "Well, you know, I could use it for tuition, but this year I really feel like my child needs to really focus on this subject matter." So they can then shift and use our portal to actually meet their child's individual needs. So the whole purpose is to meet the child of where they're at and what their needs are in that academic year. Education service providers, which includes participating schools, they have to be approved and apply based on the Department of Revenue guidelines. Those are available on our webs, on that chooseact.alabama.gov website, provides those outlines, as do our rules that we promulgated. And so a listing of all of the ESPs and the participating schools are available on that Choose Act website in little click buttons. It's like you can click, scroll through, find that provider or that participating school. We've actually had a lot of parents reach out to those that use tutoring services or therapy services and requested them to onboard so they can use them within this program. So again, the ESP application is open all year long, there's no stop or start date for that application. Right now, we have 200-plus schools that are participating schools. We have 47 e-marketplace vendors. Now, when you say 47, you're like, that doesn't seem like a lot, but they probably offer over thousands of products for a child's individual needs. Again, going back, there's no bulk purchases, so you can't buy a pallet of coffee paper, you can buy a pack. So we only have one that's currently offering exam assessments, 11 online school options, 24 vendors providing online classes, specific and courses, 31 providing textbooks, curriculum, education materials, again, like Apologia and other popular homeschool program curriculums. We only have right now nine providing educational therapies. But of those nine, think of one of the lines of some of those are corporate-based, so you have multiple people that provide therapies within that, their own umbrella. Forty offering private tutoring, again, some of the bigger names in the areas, even some of those corporate-type-based tutoring services. Sylvan and those are actually within here too, as education service providers. So again, parents can utilize the program through that platform to pay these education service providers for that specific child. Now, before I get, I will say, you know, within these tax credits, like I said, it's one per individual student. So you can't borrow from Sally to pay for Jay's expenses. They are based on each individual student's needs. So again, there's no mix and matching between students, you should only use Sally's funds to pay for Sally's education. But again, every, it is available for parents on an annual basis. We did recognize that not everybody wants to call it Department of Revenue, and we also recognized that we didn't feel like we had enough staff support to be able to answer all the questions on this brand-new program. So we did also partner with Class Wallet to help us with that customer support. They are actually available 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and Saturdays 9:00 to 3:00. Because again, it's critical for parents, working parents specifically, to get that help, to get in the program. And so they're able to provide that support that Department of Revenue otherwise could not at that moment. So again, program website is chooseact.alabama.gov. But we just kind of hitting on it, the first two years, two-pronged approach for two years. That third year, that 300% of federal poverty level does come off, but we still do sort by AGI. So again, it goes back to the students with the most needs will be available in the program first. And I did bring business cards, so if anybody has any heart-hitting questions, you're more than welcome to email me directly or if you, we're even happy to make presentations around the state. We've been to multiple schools and school systems in addition to our webinar, so we're happy to travel and talk about it as well.
Tracy and I were talking at lunch that we actually did the webinar.
Oh, well, good, yeah, it's a little different.
It was very informative and very, and it wasn't, and again, we were mentioning, it wasn't too long, it wasn't over one's head. And you could go back and, you know.
Yes, yes. Yeah, it is available, the video webinar is available. But we do have webinars where some people can sign up for, where you can actually actively ask questions as well.
I have to compliment you, the website is super easy to use. I actually downloaded and printed the Parent Guide.
Wonderful, good.
Because I had some parents in my local school district that had some questions, and I said, "Well, I'll just, I'll just print this off for you, and if you have any questions, we'll try to answer, you know, those questions." Even though it's, it's your program.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's a natural ask for our constituents to come to ask, so.
And that's one of the hurdles with the program being Department of Revenue. It is an income tax credit that we recognize very early on, that there is that, that little bit of a difference, so.
Have you all thought yet about, one of the questions I had is I, and I shared this with Ms. Ziegler, as I listened to the webinar, what happens, well, it's really two questions. So what happens, though, if a parent is dissatisfied with a vendor? So, you know, we have a process in public school, and parents are dissatisfied, they know exactly.
They know exactly, you know, where to take that.
Sure.
But if the vendor, even if they've been fully vetted, has been paid, but the parent is not satisfied with the service, or the child is not improving. You're obviously not educators, so what is that process?
Again, the way the process works now, user participates school, for example. So the parent's decision, again, it goes back to the parent's decision, of course, where they place their child. And we do not abringe on any parent-school contracts and those types of aspects. So what it does is, in essence, if a child, a school has to let us know if a child unenrolls within 10 days, because that credit is based on the fact of that enrollment in a participating school. So if the parent was to see that maybe this was not the best place for our school, they can go through whatever process they need to change or switch to a different type of education platform. But in essence, once that school notifies us that they're unenrolled, we freeze those funds. And then we re-verify if they've either enrolled in a new participating school. And if they have, once we get that verification, we can open that back up. Or say they switched to a home education program, we can make those adjustments.
So you'll be doing the follow-up to make sure on the enrollment piece because.
Yes.
I mean, I hate to say this, but if someone's being paid, the likelihood that they want to report that they should no longer be paid.
Yes.
That's, there's not an incentive there.
Right, and we do follow-ups on that enrollment. Schools are required to report to us within 10 days of that un-enrollment. That is part of their provisions to stay at participating schools within the program.
I'm thinking more of therapists and tutors.
Right.
And people who go through your process to become a vendor. What are they required to report?
Sure. So they're not required to report anything directly to us, but we do have those safeguards on the front end. So for example, the tutors and the therapists have to provide those background check qualifications. They also have to provide the minimum qualifications of like a bachelor's degree in the field in which they are providing that tutoring service. So for example, if I wanted to go through somebody with a tutor in math, they have to show that qualification, that they provide those services, they had that background to be able to provide those services. If there was something that of course was not working out for a student, the parent is never locked in to just those. They can completely go outside of that. They can cease using that person. Because again, it goes back to a parent's choice. So yes, I may recognize that Tutor A isn't doing exactly what I need it to do. I can always then utilize my own funds if I don't find somebody within the portal, of course. But if I find somebody else that may work well within the portal, I can switch over to using them. So a parent is never locked in on how they use their funds or who they use their funds with, other than they have to be a partner approved within the funds. But again, a lot of times, parents will see this opportunity to use the funds and what they can pay for. And if there's something outside of that, they then of course have their own funds to be able, because this has alleviated some of the burden, financial burden overall.
Thank you.
Well, I'll leave my business card to Tina. And y'all are more than welcome to email me with any more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron, and thanks to Tina for putting all that together too. She has been working, or she's been our, not just since last month. She has basically been our liaison, liaison on the Choose Act since it was filed. And has been working with revenue and legislature to make sure we get questions answered. So I'm sure there'll be more questions this summer and just pass them along. And we are, I know that many people thought that I, you know, I was not board members, but I'm speaking to the public. People have thought, well, Dr. Mack is just avoiding questions, because I get questions from the press, questions when I speak to groups, and I just always say, you got to go to revenue. But it's because I want them to make, one, get the right answer. And then, two, is so that we don't, they don't get two interpretations of something, so they've been great to work with. I know we are, let's see, next, I got my assembly. Okay, so the recognitions for this next month, School Breakfast Week, and then Child and Adult Care Food Program Month. Those both, of course, have to do with child nutrition programs and are both weeds that we recognize in March. So we'll adopt those next month. You'll notice though, the National School Breakfast Week, it's actually gotten off a little bit, because we'll adopt the resolution after, the week after School Breakfast Week. But nevertheless, we'll do a lot of things that week, and it'll be a good opportunity for us to publicly acknowledge there are thousands of students who get breakfast at school every day. Because the meeting will be on the 13th. The National Distinguished, let's see, Recognition for Shelly, oh yes, our Career Tech Counselor of the Year. So we're excited about that. We'll have another person to recognize, but not nearly like we had today. So today's been a big recognition day, and thank you all for being really helpful with that, because I know it's a lot of folks and a lot of pictures. But I always remind our staff, and y'all know this, for us, we do that every month. We meet, we get to recognize people. But for many of them, it is maybe a once-in-a-lifetime experience to come to a state board meeting and get a resolution, get a recognition as a transfer or a counselor. And so we want each one of them to feel that it's very special, because it is very special for them.
Well, you could feel the excitement in the room.
It was, yeah.
That's just fun.
Between that and then getting to go see our GoPro truck today, it's been a fun.
That was fabulous.
Been a great day. A lot of good things going on. I know we're going to go now, I think, talk about the Educated Preparation Program Chapter. And Dr. Elithia Hampton's going to come up again and do that. And as she does that, I mean, I think I, so everybody has been here for this original discussion except for Mrs. Mooney and Dr. Long. And I have had a little bit of opportunity to kind of fill them in. But for everyone's benefit, let me go back, way back. As I think Ms. West pointed out when we booked this the first time. We've talked about this for a long time, trying to rewrite the whole chapter. So you'll find that our code, we manage a portion of the state's administrative code, and ours is very long. Several hundred pages. And this particular piece, it gets amended a lot. Sometimes two or three times a year, theme, different pieces. But what we found was over the years, not all of it made, it didn't, it didn't match. There were places where there were conflicts. The deans kept telling us that some of it was overburdening some. And so I've asked them to go back, just kind of start from scratch, rewrite the whole thing. We had basically kind of two false starts. COVID really set us back on one of them. We had a group of deans that were really engaged at one point, and then a couple of them changed jobs, and so that momentum was gone. So we figured out we had to internalize it. And so we have this wonderful lady before you, who you was a dean. And we brought her back, and she does all these EPP programs for us and does a fantastic job. So EPP, Educator Preparation Programs. I was on a call this week, Dr. Hampton, and somebody was talking about TEPs. And I said, you're going to have to stop and tell me what a TEP is. And they said, it's a Teacher Education Program. And I said, oh, in Alabama, we call them EPPs. And so even we educators sometimes cannot talk to one another because we use so many letters. But we call them EPPs here. And with that, we're not going to go through, there's longer presentation as we had before, but just kind of a highlights of what the changes are. We will ask you in March to vote on this again, and remember, that'll be the final vote. So you voted in January, had a long discussion in December. You voted in January to put it out for public comment, the intent to adopt. And now we're to the point that we'll do a final adoption next month unless, well, final adoption as long as everybody's still good. So, Dr. Hampton, there's your introduction.
Thank you, Dr. Mack. Good afternoon again, everyone. And so we are looking at the Educated Preparation Chapter as Dr. Mack has stated. This has been a complete rewrite. We did take it and tried to revise it because we noticed that as we began this process, there was so much that was going to be buried. I would be remiss if I didn't start by introducing two of the staff members that I'm blessed and privileged to have worked with me. Educated Preparation is really small. We only have two additional full staff and one retired person. So two of my full staff are with me here, Dr. Lamaska Walker, if you please, thank you, sir. And we just added one February the 3rd, so she's brand-new, Dr. Jamarra Rock, if you please, sir. And so very glad to have them here. Dr. Walker has been step-wise, right there with me the entire process of getting this revision. And I also, we don't have as many here today, but we have several of the EPPs here. And so if they would just at least wave their hand, they have been excellent thought partners as we went through this process, because truly, it takes all of us to think through it and see what changes are absolutely necessary. So with that collaborative spirit in mind, there have been several shifts, several, excuse me, shifts that have occurred in this rewrite of the chapter. And so one thing was that there was a bit of rigidity. The language wasn't flexible. It had a lot of that language that had been asked to a review for the reduction in red tape. And so we had some shall not, cannot, may not, must not, will not. And so we said, well, this seems like a not a child being punished. So how can we reduce this? How can we look at it in terms of opening it up, providing options, and looking at what are those essential things that educators must do, but also be creative in how they're going to do it? So that was one of the big things that we led with. The other thing is how do we address the changes that have come about in state legislation? So as you know, we have the Literacy Act, we've had the Numeracy Act. Then we also have the ATPO legislation, we have the DEI legislation. So how do we incorporate changes that speak to those, but still honoring the integrity of their discipline without taking anything away? Then the institutions, they need to make meaningful curriculum decisions. So glad that we had one institution earlier today. And as she mentioned when she discussed, thank you, Dr. Sheik, how much is a partnership now? It's not just the state's coming and it's like, oh, it's a brave visit. No, it's a time to be forthright, it's a time to be honest, transparent. Let's look at the table. Let's see those things that are your strengths. Where are those things that you may have some room for improvement? And how do we help each other so that the entire state grows? Because as Dr. Mack has put forth, that vision, every child, every chance, every day. And each day, I probably recite that to myself at least, because if I keep that at the forefront of my thinking, it always is there to say that let everything that be done be in place so that it's advancing the learning opportunities for children in Alabama. Update those program standards done on different dates. Let's talk about it. In our other codes, this is why you had so many times a year coming out with new pieces of code, because maybe the science standards were updated here. And then a few months later, you might update some art standards. And so it always was on this moving schedule. So we had some collective wisdom at the State Department that suggested, look, overarching headings, what are those standards? Because as we looked, even though there may have been nuances within the standard change, the overall standards that they wanted had some consistency. So by bringing it there and only including those overall headings, it increased the number of times we would have to change those. Now, does that mean that the EPPs don't have to meet those standards in totality? Absolutely not. They still will be required to do that. But they will be able to decide how they meet those standards in their program, instead of us being work-prescriptive with that. Another thing is that we have a huge teaching shortage. I think it was two board meetings ago that we talked about, and I think it's elementary, early childhood, collaborative ed, are the areas where we have our largest teaching shortage. So how do we do things so that we can honor the fact that we know we need teachers in this area and encourage EPPs to have opportunities to offer programs that address that? Accreditation demands. As you know, with the Literacy Act, one of the requirements was that every institution by 2024 fall have gone through a CAPE accreditation visit and they be at the point of accreditation. Happy to report, we've had our last institution to have done their first accreditation visit. And although it has to go to the council, the feedback from the committee was very favorable before that. So we are glad to have that in Alabama. They have made tremendous progress, and they are working continuously to have that effort where they're improving. Then allow Class B programs for all of your certifications, certificates that are allowed through the certification based on testing. If somebody can take a test on it, they should be able to do a first-time initial certification program in it as well. So we wanted to have some consistency between those two. And your Class A and Double A programs, we wanted to open that up so it's not just that you have these programs, but now that you have them already meeting these standards at initial, how do you afford that and make it more at an advanced level so that they are continually progressing in their knowledge base? So in these efforts, there are a few things that we absolutely wanted to keep and keep at the forefront of our focus. One, content knowledge. Two is pedagogical delivery. Quality assessments, and not just quality assessments. One of the things you want to make sure is that they were quality assessments that were valid and reliable. And applicable field experiences. Ms. Mooney, I think you asked about it earlier, about the field experiences, and we want to keep that as a focus, because there are certain things that candidates need to do, know how to do when they get out there to the schools, or they're going to feel overwhelmed. And as you mentioned also about classroom management, that's something we wanted to keep there as a focus. Then our testing for certification requirements. As mentioned earlier, when American Board even came up, ACAP, we have that here in Alabama. We have the content knowledge assessments. We also have the pedagogical assessment, which now we use in TPA in the state. So we wanted those to be at the forefront as well. But what we wanted there also is options for program approval. And so with those options for program approval, they had it where we are going to have, and you'll see this on the next slide, so I won't talk about it, what we'll do in the state. But they also have the option if they want to go through a CAPE-type visit with their programs as well. And also for them to get their innovative programs approved. So sometimes I'll have a dean or a certification director, a chairperson, someone call me and say, look, we really want to do this program. And it's a combination of a few programs that we have. I'm like, okay. So I have to go talk to Ms. Harris and say, is this going to be a problem for certification if they want to combine these? And she tells me it's not a problem, then our team gets busy and says, okay, how can we help them to do this? Because several other candidates want to have multiple certifications when they complete their programs. So this is our overall process. It's called CHIP. Now, CHIP was one that caused a lot of heartburn, headache, and frustration throughout the state. Many individuals reported that they found it redundant and overburdening.
It was.
It was a bit more of compliance monitoring, although it was called continuous improvement, because you had certain things you have to meet this, you have to do this, you have to do this, we want to check it. They had to do course descriptions. They had pieces of the standards embedded within the course description. And all of that resulted in it being very rigid. Individuals felt like they didn't have the flexibility to do what they wanted to do with their candidates. And even though their partners, P through 12 partners, may have said, we need more of this, the CHIP process didn't honor it to say that they have the freedom to do that. So because of all of these things, we did not want to see our EPPs continue to be frustrated in that way, because we want them to be comfortable enough to offer quality programs. So we have a new program called ALPI, Alabama Program Improvement for Educators, okay? So with this, it's going to be to first let each EPP have the ability to provide assurances that they are aligning their programs for standards. We have now, you're going to have two more next month. We have visited total of 21 of the 24 EPPs in Alabama. With that, it has been transformational to see how the conversations have evolved, how the trust level has evolved, how my cell phone gets more calls than it probably ever did, because every EPP has my cell number. And I tell them, feel free to use it, because we want them to understand that we are truly thought partners with you in this process. We focus on key assessments that aid in candidate preparation. Not just the key assessment for the sake of having one, but how is it helping to ensure that those candidates are better prepared? With dispositions, one of the things, you know, I say it everywhere I go, children don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And so how do we focus our mindset for our candidates to ensure that they are going out into the schools and having a positive attitude and disposition and ready to work with those students in P through 12? When we look at our field experiences, are they there to make sure they are prepared and ready to do their job? And so very early, going and being intentional about letting them see what this is all about, letting them work with those small groups so they get their hands wet and say, yeah, I have a little confidence now, I think I can do that. Letting them teach one lesson and say, oh, you did a pretty good job. Now let me give you some feedback on ways that you can improve. And then letting them teach more, so that when they go out there on their first teaching assignment, they feel like they have the self-evidence and believe in themselves that this is a job that they can do, and they can do well. We want to align with CAPE requirements. One other disconnect with our CHIP process before was that they had to do this with CHIP, and then they had to turn it all the way back around and do something different for CAPE. Well, no, that just doesn't make sense. So how can we align it with the CAPE process? So this gives them now feedback, and many of the institutions that had their CAPE visits for first time said this was an amazing thing to help them prepare for their CAPE visit. So that's what we wanted to do, make sure this process aligned with what they had to do for unit approval as well. We emphasize the validity and reliability pieces of those assessments, which is another requirement they had to do for CAPE. And they can make changes based upon data, candidate needs, and school district needs. So they will have the document submissions now, and there will be visit components in this new process as well. So with our changes, one of the big ones with faculty requirements, we look to see why the faculty requirements were in places they worked. It was 30 hours at the graduate level in the content areas, so they couldn't use courses such as classroom management or assessment or anything of that matter. They had to be in that. So they couldn't use courses such as classroom management or assessment or anything of that matter, they had to be in that content. And we found that the reason was simply because that's the way it had always been done. Well, didn't say that. We we looked at what the best thought pattern was from uh in the national creditors, SACC OC, looked at uh CAPE to see what they were saying and and we revised that so that it would be more aligned. We we did the changes to reflect the legislation, the greater focus on classroom management. Big changes GPA allowances. We found that we had some individuals that may have had a two point four nine seven. The requirement was a two point five. This candidate now had come and they were prepared. They were older candidates and institutions like, you are killing us with this. So we put some things in place that if that individual has the ability to demonstrate that they are capable of doing graduate work at the level needed, then they can get into their program and not keep someone that has the passion to be an educator out. We removed a lot of this historical information. Uh, we have the historical documents that will be available, but we just did not need a full document of a history. We mentioned about the flexibility, the less restrictive languages and the standards being reported in overarching instead of in detail. And with that, do you have any questions?
You are spectacular.
She is, and so so is Dr. Walker, and I'm sure Dr. Wright too. I don't know her, so.
Absolutely.
I didn't need to neglect anybody back there.
And your visits have made a difference.
Oh, and they have.
People that I've talked to.
Thank you.
It really has made a difference.
So we'll be, so this will be next month. I will tell you that our programs are anxious to get it done, I think, because they want to officially move to the new system.
You said this is the last vote, right?
This is it. And then it'll be official and the whole session. And I do, I have a hard, you know, I think, did we give a hard notebook to everybody? I just have one for review, so if anybody needs it. But if anybody needs a notebook, I have a hard copy. But it is on your assembly too. And I can make copies if you need. Okay, um, so that, I think, Dr. Chastis, that bring us to me?
It does.
Okay, well, I have a little, I'll keep it short, but I have a few more things than I normally do. Um, so first, I wanna show y'all this and I wanna, this is gonna go up in the um, the uh T conference room. So you know, last year was fiftieth anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War and we did a lot of projects for the Vietnam War. Hey, Dr. Reynolds is not here today, but I've already sent him a picture of this. So the Department of Defense, they had thirteen thousand agencies or schools that participated in the um, the commemorative uh event for the fiftieth fiftieth year of the end of the Vietnam War. Of the thirteen thousand entries, we were in the top fifty, which puts us in the top one percent. So we got this very special thing from the Secretary of Defense and a resolution from the Defense Department. So I was very proud of that. And Dr. Bozeman, but he's not here, but he led all that work for us. So pretty neat to be in the top one percent. The uh, so I was wondering, great on that. To also thanks, Dr. Chastis, thanks for the shout out for our staff and myself, but kudos back to you too because as I've said and I wanna say publicly, we could not do this work without the support of the board. And thank you all for for believing in us and working with us and helping us get through all these rule changes and things we have to do. And and like the truck today, you know, that's that's a big deal. We talked about it for a long time. Um, and and it, but it takes us all working together and y'all have been very patient to help us get through that. Uh, Ms. Martin slipped out to go over, but the governor signed the proclamation today for Career Tech Month too. Y'all did a pro, you did a proclamation last month at our board meeting because it's coming up too. But this is Career Tech Awareness Month and so we you will see lots of other things around the state this month. We, um, okay, let's see what else I have on here. Okay, I wanted to talk about three, two two announcements here and three, three little short things. I promise they won't be long. So one is PARCA. Every year, you remember there's, the PARCA has an annual meeting in Birmingham. It is this year, that's Public Affairs Research Council of Alabama, it's Mar, Friday, March the seventh. We have purchased a table as we always do. Um, and if you would like to come, we need to get them your name yesterday. So if you'll let us know as quickly as possible, we will get your name on the table and then we'll fill it in with some staff. Now, let me tell you, the the theme this year, if you've not seen it, is mental health. Um, we are gonna have, uh, Dr. Melissa Shields is gonna represent us on a panel to talk about student mental health. I am not gonna be there because that's the day that we're gonna find out whether Dr. Gonsolin becomes the National Superintendent of the Year. So I'm gonna be in New Orleans with you. But Dr. Shields is gonna take my place on the panel and we'll have, we'll have a lot of staff there. But we would love to fill our table with board members if you can come. Don't feel an obligation to come. But if you think you can, um, Friday, March seventh, then we need to tell them as quickly as possible. The program starts at nine o'clock. It will have Commissioner of Mental Health, Kim Boswell will speak. We will have, um, let's see, there's another person from Children's Hospital to speak. Uh, Representative Pebblin Warren is speaking and then there's the panel. And then Governor Ivey will be given the keynote address at lunch. So it starts at nine, it'll be over by one or one thirty. Okay, so just let Chuck Markham know if you can go and you'd like one of our seats. And if we, because then we're gonna fill in around you guys. So we're saving them for you first and then we'll fill in uh staff members for the rest of the table. And it's my list. Um, so next month, also remember on March the twelfth, I think you have your invitation. So we will have a special program at the Shakespeare Festival in the octagon, I think, for um, for our students who win arts awards. And you know, we've done that the last few years the same way. We'll have a reception, then we will have the program. The the exhibit is up now. There's, you know, we do high school first, the high school exhibit is up in the Capitol. If you wanna walk over there anytime and look at it, and the elementary exhibit will go up in March. But we will recognize all of them the same day, March the twelfth. So how we'll do that, we'll do, we'll have them March the twelfth. You actually passed the resolutions this morning that we'll hand out. And then, uh, Mrs. Deegler mentioned it's a great idea. If any of you are gonna stay the night, then maybe we can get together and find a place where we can all just go have a very relaxed meal together that evening. Cause I think it's, is it one, two o'clock?
Yeah, one o'clock reception, awards at two.
Okay, so one o'clock reception, awards at two. Okay, and then of course, any questions about those things, let me know. So there were two things I was asked to address and I don't have any slides on these, but I wanna talk about them. Um, and my media friends will all be excited. So one is the foundation program, quote, hybrid change, um, and what that looks like. I think by next month or the next, I will have, I'll be able to have you some more specific slides. But let me tell you how it has shaped up now. So there are two, the the, there are two big pieces to the funding study that the legislature has undertaken in the last year. And one of them is the base funding and what does base funding look like? And the other one is weights, so student funding weights on top of the base. We've had a lot of good conversations, obviously, with the legislature. They brought in a group of consultants with the consultants, with the education family, with the governor's office, Nick and I have been able to have a lot of talks about this and the budget office. So it's just been a lot of people discussing, but in the end, what um, the governor pretty much announced in her speech, what she would support, and this is what's moving forward, is to leave the base alone. So the base is what we call the foundation program. And so, so of those two pieces, the base will just stay just like it is. But the weights, we've never had weights before, and so they're gonna layer weights on top of the foundation program. Uh, the governor proposed about a hundred and ten million dollars on that. Ten million comes out of the direct budget. And it would be for EL students and it would be distributed on the current EL formula. So if you remember, the more densely populated your EL kids are, the more, the higher percentage of funding you get. So there are two or three tiers of funding. And the more, the more densely populated your EL students are, the more funds you get. And so adding ten million dollars just into that distribution as it is now. So it's already, we already have that a student weight for EL, we just have, she's adding a lot more money to it. The new ones are forty million dollars for special ed, which would be based on our child counts, the way the bill's written. So every fall, we do an official child count for how many students qualify for special ed. It is not per category. So so, so a student, the way it's written, with whether you had a specific learning disability or autism or traumatic brain injury, it's the same weight. Okay, some states have like six categories, it's more complex. But what's been proposed, it'd be the same way for every student who qualifies for special ed, there would be an additional amount of money. I'm not, can't release those publicly yet, but it's pretty, I mean, it's pretty simple. Math, and I say it's simple math, it's it's forty million dollars. And we know how many kids on child count, that's publicly reported, you can just do the division and that's how much it is. So we'll run a spreadsheet for them on that, but that's, that's pretty, pretty straightforward. Then forty million based on economically disadvantaged. So those are mostly students who qualify for Medicaid. That's how that's calculated in general. It's Medicaid or uh food assistance. Families that follow, that qualify for Medicaid and food assistance going to what we call um, uh, direct, direct eligibility for free and reduced lunch. Now, you can also fill out the free and reduced lunch application, but we have fewer and fewer parents doing that now because of the direct cert method. But you add all those up and you will get a number. And if you take that, that big old book that the uh AASB gave you and you loaned it up to a Lounds County or Jefferson County or wherever, one of the numbers they have on there is percentage that qualifies for free and reduced lunch. So we'll take the number of children qualified for free and reduced lunch statewide, divide it into forty million, and that's how much per child it would be, and then it'd be distributed out based on that. And then the last one is sparsity. Now, that's the one that's new to everybody. So for every county that has fewer than fifty residents per square mile, they would get an additional piece. And the way it's written, it's not like, um, it's just straight up. If you're a county that qualifies, then you get a certain amount of money. It's not necessarily, it's not a, uh, I don't have, it's not, it's not student based so much. You, the county either qualifies for it or doesn't. No cities qualify because it's written that it's only for counties that are sparsely populated. No city uh systems would qualify. Now, could this all change? Absolutely. The legislative process is about change. So I have talked a little bit with the budget chairs about this and as the process goes through, they may add weights, they may add additional money to the weights we have, they can certainly subtract from it. But we'll see how that, what that looks like. But the, the bills are traveling through the Senate first this year, and so Senator Orr is sponsoring those bills. And I've, I've had more conversation with him about it than I have Chairman Garrett because it started with the Senate. But we'll be talking to both of them in the next few weeks. So that's why they keep calling it a hybrid model because it, the base unchanged, but the weights are added on top of the base. Now, I think that's a good thing. I was, I was, the base has been, the, all the conversation's been about what's the new, if we change the base, then how, what do we make it look like? And we do some really good things in our current base that other states don't do that. I've had calls, in fact, I had a call with the governor's office this, this week that are interested in moving to a system more like ours. And because we do very unique things like, let me give you an example. Prior to ninety-five, um, when a teacher got a pay, got a master's degree, we didn't reimburse the master's degree to the district. And so a lot of districts would discourage teachers from going back to school and get a master's degree because they had, they had to pay that out of local. So the, our program, we reimburse at actual teacher salary based on years of experience and degree. And so we are, what, what, before ninety-five, what we saw was that poor rural districts mostly had teachers with a bachelor's degree. And your wealthier suburban districts had teachers with advanced degrees, masters, EBS and doctorate. Well, now they're more evenly distributed across the state. So it has, it has added, it's added opportunity across the state by spreading that out. And those are complex things, but they're kind of built into the current system. And so as you talk to legislators, they kept saying, well, if we change, we don't wanna lose this, and we don't wanna lose this, and we don't wanna lose this, and we don't wanna lose this. But if we don't wanna lose those things, then why don't we just keep those things? Another thing is we provide, y'all provide your request, classroom supply money for every teacher. That's part of the base and not every state does that. And uh, you know, I would have real concerns that if we just gave a block grant to districts and didn't tell them they had to give teachers any money to spend their classroom week, and they didn't have to buy library books if they wanted to spend that money on football turf, then we might not, there might be some cases, we're gonna buy library books. I hate to say that, but we, it's just, you know, we, the system works. And again, the, the, my understanding, I didn't get to go this morning, is that the commission, the legislative commission had their last meeting and decided that they are going to back this model of keeping the base as it is, but adding the weights on top of it. So, which I fully support things, but it's been good to have a discussion about it and to have people talking about what if, what if, what if, and looking at other states to get us to this point. I was asked this morning, did that mean it was dead forever? Nothing is dead forever. Did I, what did Faulkner say? The history's not dead, it's not even past. So we'll see if it comes back later, but I think for this year, it's probably settled. And then the last thing is I've been asked a lot of questions about the U.S. Department of Education and the changes there. So, I mean, I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of uncertainty out there. I'm actually really, uh, you're gonna be surprised, but I'm actually really encouraged by the, the announcements that have been coming out. You know, Secretary McMahon, Secretary Designate McMahon was up for confirmation today. I don't have, I don't know if that's happened or not yet. But her, and I've never met her, but the deputy secretary that's been nominated, Penny Schwinn, who was the state commissioner in Tennessee, uh, I'm very close to, she's a consummate educator. She believes deeply in the work that we do. And so I think, I think she'll, she'll be very good at the department. And this morning, we got official notice that Kirsten Basler, who's another close friend of mine and is the current state superintendent in North Dakota, is gonna be the Assistant Secretary for Elementary and Secondary Education. And they also announced, they announced five assistant secretaries this morning. And um, I only know two of them, but the word is very positive on all of them. And uh, one I know really, really well and one a little more. I, you know, people say, well, I keep getting this question, when the department's abolished, what are you gonna do? Well, I, they're hiring a lot of people if they're planning on abolishing the department, which takes congressional action, remember. Now, will it be changed? Absolutely. There's no question they're gonna reorganize. There's no question that certain programs are gonna be diminished and or maybe cut, um, and other new programs will come about. But y'all, every administration does that. They don't all talk about it so much. I'll give President Trump that, he keeps talking about it. But they all do that. They add new programs, they diminish old programs, they make changes. But the people they're putting in place are truly great educators. Money wise, our colleagues in higher ed are a lot more worried than I am. And they, and and for good reason, because a lot of the higher ed grant programs are discretionary programs. So they're programs that the, the Department of Education has created within the department to give money for grants, for research, and and those programs might be cut. The president's very, been very clear about that. All discretionary programs are on the table. We get an extremely small amount of discretionary money. So I don't wanna diminish that. But for us, most of our money comes through child nutrition, which doesn't even go through the Department of Education. Second most is Title One, Title One, Two, Three, the the S of uh probes. Those are not discretionary. They are all formulaic, they are determined by Congress. And this year's money is already set, it was set last year. Could there be cuts for next year's budget? Yes, absolutely. Every year we're fighting, we don't want cuts to those programs. But, but for now, there's no change in any of those programs. And then the third. And then the third big pot of money we get is IDEA or special ed, and again, no cuts, no cuts, no cuts. In fact, behind the scenes, they're talking about increases in special ed funding. So I don't see, I don't see any changes on the horizon for our schools in those kind of programs. Now, do I have concerns? Yes, on some of them, here's where my concerns are, there's, they are definitely not, as people resign, they're not replacing all the jobs, and that means things can slow down. You all probably, I don't know if I fussed about it or not, but when the Biden administration came in, you know, they, between the administration and Congress, it took a long time to get people confirmed, like, and that's why these are designate offices, because you remember, I'm not sure the Biden administration ever technically got their deputy superintendent confirmed, the secretary, Miguel Cardona was confirmed, but they operated for years with an interim deputy because they couldn't get confirmation, or maybe it was an interim assistant for elementary secretary, but they couldn't get these people through the confirmation process, and so that means they can't hire other staffers. And so that, what that means is when we have, these great people out here have a question, sometimes our question sits in somebody's queue for weeks because we can't get it answered. So do I have concerns? That's my biggest concern, is that we might have questions that just kind of linger because the new staff person has not yet been hired that would answer that question. The people who process dear colleague letters and memos, they are all still there because they come daily just to the office. So I think it'll all bounce out soon, I'm telling you, the people they've nominated are top star candidates, now they gotta get through confirmation, but we'll get through that, and they will make changes. And there's talk about taking whole sections, so for instance, one of them that's been publicly discussed is the Office of Civil Rights, which is an investigative arm of the Department of Education, moving that whole agency to the Department of Justice. And I mean, people, we can, you can like it or you can not like it, but in the end, I have no control over that. But there's been no talk about abolishing the Office of Civil Rights, it's just moving it to justice. And it may not happen, I don't know. One of the people that was nominated this morning is actually the Assistant Secretary over that office. So made me think, well, that may just be a rumor, because why would you hire somebody to be over that office if you weren't gonna maintain the office? But I don't know, you know, those things will be settled out. But I have had a lot of questions from board members and from the public, like it is the most common question I get now. And I just promise you, we're gonna work through it, we're gonna work through it, we're gonna work through it. There's been, the money has continued to flow for our programs. Higher ed, they're in a different boat because their money flows differently. There are, and we'll wind this down, but like, you saw this morning that IES was being downsized, so that's the Institute for Educational Sciences. So that's discretionary money, and there are some, we have some grants around the state and higher ed that are funded through IES, and those are being, it's my understanding, like they're all being put on hold. So you may find that you get a call from a university that they are, they're worried about, they may have to lay off people or stop a program, but they're not our programs. Our K-12 programs, again, are mostly 99% formulaic. We have a couple of, we have a couple of small discretionary programs, we've not been totally cut, but they could be. So we'll work through it, send questions to me, that's probably about it, Dr. Chasten, but I'd be glad to answer any other questions, but those are the things I've wanted to cover.
Any other questions? If not, this meeting is adjourned.